Are those annual up on the wall?
Is it every two years?
Are those, is it every year we do pictures or every two years?
We can talk about that.
Every year.
Every year.
More appropriate time. Ready? We do it every two years?
Every year.
Nope, every year.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for March 2nd, 2020. Councilmember Williams advised us that she wasn't gonna be able to make it today because of work. With that, we have invocation and pledge of allegiance being led by City Clerk Treasurer Timmons.
If we could bow our heads. Father God, I ask that you be with us all as we conduct and discuss city business. I ask that you remind the powers to be to make decisions that are fair and just and to have an open mind, God. I also like to thank you, Lord, for waking everyone up in this room with more health than sickness. And I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to spend time with Jim Nary, who reminded us all to enjoy every moment. In Jesus' name, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We will move on to the special guests and announcements. The first announcement is it pains me to formally notify the Mammell City Council that the Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Jim Nary, passed away one week ago today. I'm sure you all knew that, but this is the first chance that we get to note that at a City Council meeting. I wanted to take a minute and read what the city had posted on our Facebook page, and that is that the City of Mammell is deeply saddened to announce the loss of our Planning and Zoning Director, Mr. Jim Nary. Joining us in January 13th, 2003, Jim dedicated seventeen years to the growth and development of our city. Prior to his onboarding with the City of Mammell, Jim served as the Director of Planning and Development for Plaski County, and he was an alumnus at the University of Central Arkansas, where he held a bachelor's in speech and theater arts, which was his biggest passion. A certified floodplain manager since 2000, Jim was among the first group to be certified in Arkansas. He was a member of the Association of State Floodplain Managers, White Oak Bio-Wetlands Conservancy Steering Committee, the American Public Works Association, the Arkansas Floodplain Management Association, where he previously served as the Chairman, and the Governor's Disaster Council on Floodplain Committee. He also held a certification as a national certified floodplain manager. He earned countless state and national awards for the City of Mammell. Most notable awards include the Arkansas Floodplain Management Association Special Achievement Award, as a five-year recipient, the Arkansas Floodplain County, a two-year recipient, and Community, a two-year recipient, Community of the Year. He was also granted the James Lee Witt Award for Local Excellence in Floodplain Management. Jim was instrumental in instituting and developing a number of programs, ordinances, and training sessions that ensured our community was safe, efficient, and clean. Much of his work, including floodplain management, stormwater compliance, and city street maintenance and hazard mitigation, remained behind the scenes and out of the spotlight, but that does not negate its importance. His work was vital in keeping our community beautiful, progressive, and operational. In his personal life, he loved good food and was the go-to man around the office for restaurant recommendations. He was an animal lover, especially for his cat Snickers, and he was the biggest fan of Old Rock, Tom Petty, and A Good Time. Lauren Fason, a city employee that worked for Jim for many years, remembers his passion for travel and adds that, quote, "He always found the perfect hallmark card for the special people in his life." It is a very somber day around here at City Hall. Jim, your loss is felt all over the City of Mammell. Your impact continues to make a difference in Plaski County, and your legacy will forever be ingrained in the history of central Arkansas. We miss you already, Jim. May you rest in peace. I want to take a moment to thank Councilmember Vapurzam when the family who lived out of state contacted the city for assistance. John quickly volunteered his personal time to put together a service, and the city hosted that private service at the, it was public, it was public, it was open to the public, but it was held at the Center on the Lake. With that, we had a quick little video we wanted to show of some of the photographs of Jim. What I wanted to do is one final farewell to Jim, as I'd ask you to stand and rise with me as we enjoy a minute of silence in his memory. Thank you. Now that we've really set the mood for a great, exciting City Council meeting, I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is the, a presentation by the Sheepdog Impact Assistance here. If y'all would like to come on up, and the microphone's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Jeff Watts. I am the Chapter Commander for Sheepdog Impact Assistance here in central Arkansas. Joined here tonight by several of our officers, number one, my wife, Billy, officers Brent Lewis and his wife Pam, Mark Morgan and his wife Marta, and Tim Jackson, they're all here tonight with us. Each year, we award a Sheepdog of the Year. What is a Sheepdog? A Sheepdog is any member of the military or first responder ranks. That's who we serve. Our job is to get them off the couch, and the ones that have been injured in the line of duty or in combat, and get them moving again. We've got a saying, if you're moving, you're not dead yet. And so, our job is to provide opportunities for them to re-engage in life after severe injury. We do that through disaster response missions. We deploy to areas all over the country, and we take them with us, to give them a chance to re-energize and to remember why they served in the first place. And secondly, we do what we call outdoor adventures, and these are opportunities to get them out of the house, off the couch, and doing skydiving, scuba diving, Spartan races, anything we can do physically to get them out, to get them outdoors, get them with other like-minded individuals who have been injured themselves. As I said, each year, we award a Sheepdog of the Year. This is a member of the military or first responders who's gone above and beyond. This year, we've awarded it to Fire Chief Ezel. Obviously, you know him. I don't think we'll have any objections to this. He is serving your community with valor and honor. So I'm gonna read this for the record, if we could, what the certificate says, and then, there you are, Chief, how are you? This says, "2019 Central Arkansas Chapter Sheepdog of the Year is awarded to Fire Chief Gerald Ezel, Mammell Fire Department. In recognition of Chief Gerald Ezel's twenty-nine years of dedicated service, as well as for his life-saving act of kindness in 2019, the Central Arkansas Chapter would like to thank him for his unwavering dedication to the service of others. His sense of duty represents the true heart of a sheepdog and is the epitome of our motto, 'Helping others is a way of life.' Chief Ezel's service reflects great credit upon himself, his family, the Mammell Fire Department, and all those who wear the uniform." So if we could, we would be able to enter that. Chief? So it's that, and I got something else, some more hardware for you. And then, the plaque reads, "Fire Chief Gerald Ezel, Mammell Fire Department. It's hereby recognized as the 2019 Central Arkansas Chapter Sheepdog of the Year in recognition of his selflessness and dedication to country and community. His actions exemplify the Sheepdog motto, 'Helping others is a way of life.'" And one more thing. Challenge coins, and the military knows what a challenge coin is, and this is one that we want to make sure we give to you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Can we get you all to come up here and take a photograph with Chief Ezel?
Sure, can we get the rest of the officers?
Yeah, bring everyone up.
Hang on, everybody dress up.
And his family, whoever wants to, everyone, come on up. Come on up, everyone.
Come on, Ezeals.
Come on, Ezel. Can we move that podium?
Yes.
Please? You don't wanna kinda join in?
I'm just getting in the photograph.
You got a higher standing. Thank you very much.
Mark?
I recognize at least one individual from my time when I attended the Citizens Police Academy. That'd be Mark. Now, y'all are free to stay, if you'd like, but I'm about to move on into the State of the City report, which is a little report on the current state of the city, so we wouldn't be offended if y'all decided to leave or stayed, it's up to you. And I just wanted to formally congratulate Chief Ezel on that accomplishment.
Thank you. If you need somebody to hold the camera, let me know. And then there were five.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is the State of the City report, which I will present to you now. Ladies and gentlemen of the Mammell City Council, Department Heads, City Employees, and my fellow citizens, Arkansas law requires that within the first ninety days of the year, I must report to you on the municipal affairs of the city and recommend such measures as may seem advisable. This is that report. 2019 was a year of change, action, and planning within the City of Mammell. Last year saw a new mayor, a new city attorney, two new City Council members, two new department heads, three new department heads, if you count Ms. Walker joining us as the new Director of Human Resources, and four, if you count the vacancy created when Jim Nary passed away last week. We completed some projects, such as the new interchange, we started other projects, and we set the stage for an exciting and productive 2020. I came to you last year to announce a plan to reduce our current bond debt to save taxpayers from unnecessary interest payments, and I'm proud to announce that the city underwent a bond refunding and issuance that effectively refinanced some of our debt to pay off those bonds four years early with a gross cash flow benefit of $1.35 million to the taxpayers. Folks, I can't stress how big of a deal this is. Local governments don't normally refinance debt except to take on more debt or to decrease their payments. I'm proud of the City Council's wisdom and leadership in this matter, as not only did we not take on additional debt, but we increased our annual payments in order to save money in the long run. While still on the topic of fiscal responsibility, during last year's State of the City, I announced the goal of better long-term financial planning for anticipated capital expenditures through a proposed overhaul of the budget and the budgeting process. Last year, the City Council created the Capital Improvement Fund to set aside funds for these anticipated expenditures. We began setting aside these funds in this year's budget. There's still much work to be done here, but we've already begun making meaningful change. At the 2014 general election, Mammell voters approved bonds to finance the much-needed remodel and renovation of City Hall. Just last year, architects were selected, designs were completed, and construction commenced. The redesign will effectively transform City Hall's motel-style layout to a more practical floor plan, providing for a more efficient workflow and additional security. Larger council chambers will accommodate more seating, and new technology will allow for the live streaming of City Council meetings from not only the City Council chambers, but the primary conference room. I anticipate complete, I anticipate completion of this project in the fourth quarter of this year. Special thanks to Central Arkansas Water for allowing us to use one of their buildings during the first phase of our construction. Aside from the obvious change of mayor, the mayor's office saw substantial changes last year through the addition of newly modified positions of what is now the Chief of Staff position and the Communications Coordinator. Chief of Staff Scott Grummer brings his expertise, strategic thinking, and organization to the city. He's had his fingers in virtually every project that we're working on and has been a key factor in our ability to move into overdrive here at City Hall. Effective communication to and from City Hall is vital to a successful and responsive local government. Anyone who follows the city on social media knows my Communication Coordinator, Rachel Hall. Because of her efforts, we've seen the city's Facebook likes increase by thirty-five percent and its followers by nearly forty-three percent. Some of our Facebook posts have been known to reach over fifteen thousand people. Our Twitter has increased its followers by thirteen point five percent and our Instagram by over one hundred and seventeen percent. These may seem like mere numbers, but they translate to stronger, to a stronger and more informed community and a more responsive city government. Some of my favorite social media posts are the videos that Rachel has produced. Such videos include introductions to the council members, a day in the life of the police chief, the Very Merry Mammell mission, and who can forget our most popular video of 2019, Chief Sam Williams retires after forty-seven years. While on the topic of communication, I'm proud to announce that the city will partner and is partnering with C Click Fix, a request and work management app and web tool that will strengthen communications between residents and the city by allowing residents to pose non-emergency neighborhood issues, such as potholes or streetlight outages. Stay tuned for a launch here in the next month or two. Public safety remains the city's primary focus. Last year, the Mammell Police Department saw the retirement of its longtime chief, Sam Williams, and the promotion of Cory Pickard to Chief of Police. As I reflect back on my first year of mayor, perhaps the most difficult single decision I faced was the selection of the new Chief of Police. Six internal applicants faced a grueling and technical application phase, followed by an initial interview comprised almost exclusively of questions from the other applicants, and culminated in a four-plus-hour interview and ride-along as we patrolled the streets and responded to calls. I am confident that all six of those applicants could have done a great job as chief, but Cory Pickard came out on top. If you'd like to learn more about our new Chief of Police, check out his Day in the Life video on Facebook, where yes, as you guessed it, he does visit a doughnut shop and is staring holes in me right now. We have made it a priority to have a sufficiently staffed and qualified dispatch and 911 call center. You may recall that last year, we added two new dispatchers, and this year, we adjusted the pay of dispatchers and senior dispatchers upwards by fifteen percent to ensure that we're able to recruit and retain top candidates to these underpaid and often undervalued positions. Mammell consistently rates among the safest cities in the state. Unfortunately, that does not mean we are crime-free. There were two homicides in 2019, and the Mammell Police Department was able to close both of those out very promptly with arrests. They are still investigating the single homicide from 2018 with the help of a local FBI field office. Last year, there were ten narcotic overdoses in our city, a number that would have been higher if our first responders weren't supplied with Narcan, which can reverse the effects of opioid overdoses. The police department saw a slight decrease in total calls for service and arrests were down nineteen percent, though the total number of 911 calls remained pretty much the same. The Patrol Division saw an eleven percent decrease in traffic stops, putting it about on par with 2017, but we saw an increase in traffic citations of twenty-two percent. One of the top concerns of Mammell residents continues to be speeding through residential neighborhoods. As I stated last year, traffic enforcement is only one solution to the problem. Late last year, Public Works was able to find some funds to purchase two portable radar speed displays. Expect to see these displays and traffic enforcement officers on streets near you. Please remember to drive safe. Here are a few fun facts about the police department. 2019 saw twenty-seven people graduate from the Citizens Police Academy. Police conducted one thousand seven hundred and forty residence checks, received four thousand two hundred and nine training hours, and drove four hundred and seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five miles. That's a lot of city miles driven, and it puts a lot of stress on our fleet of vehicles, which is why I will soon be bringing to the City Council a proposal to keep our police fleet up to date and functional. The police department's goals for 2020 include increased community outreach, implementation of new defense tactics training programs for officers, additional in-service training hours, an increased focus on the reduction of impaired drivers, and accreditation of the Mammell Police Department through the Arkansas Chief of Police Association. Before I discuss the Mammell Fire Department, I want to take a moment to recognize its chief, Gerald Ezel, for his tremendous act of selflessness in donating a kidney to somebody that he didn't even know. This courageous act exemplifies Chief Ezel's desire to help others and sets a tremendous example for the firefighters under his charge. The Mammell Fire Department continues to be a leader in Arkansas with one of the top-trained departments in the state. They pride themselves in not only EMS and suppression services, but also top-notch fire protection, code enforcement, and fire education to our residents and businesses. For the year 2019, one hundred and thirty business inspections were conducted within the city, resulting in a correction of forty-nine code violations. The Fire Marshal's Office continues to do an excellent job of assuring that new businesses to the City of Mammell are following the fire code and are some of the safest places in Arkansas for our citizens and visitors. The total number of fire department responses for the year was up about three percent to one thousand seven hundred and forty-six. Again, medical emergencies, traumatic injuries, and medical assists made up the largest percentage of emergency runs at sixty-five percent. Fire responses consisted of fifty-six calls for a total loss to buildings of $927,000. Every Mammell firefighter is also a licensed EMT, but the department had two more firefighters obtain their paramedics license this year, last year, which brings our total to six paramedics, or two per shift when fully staffed. This allows us to provide advanced life supports to the citizens of Mammell quickly. One goal of the fire department has for 2020 is to start a completely voluntary program where residents can obtain a key lockbox that fire and police personnel can use to gain access into a person's home during times of emergency by using an app on their phone. This program would allow our older or less-abled population to ensure that fire and police can gain entry in an emergency without having to damage the door. The Department of Senior Services, led by Director Nicole Vogler, continues to strengthen our fifty-plus community through the services provided at the Mammell Center on the Lake, promoting health and well-being for this precious population. For the year 2019, the Mammell Center on the Lake had a total memberships of one thousand seven hundred and thirteen, which is an increase of over six percent. They also had over one hundred and thirty-four thousand member visits logged. They logged over seventy-six hundred trips and had twenty thousand five hundred and eleven total volunteer hours, which is an increase of over four thousand two hundred and seventy hours. I want to send a special thank you to each and every person that volunteers at the Center on the Lake, as volunteers are instrumental to making this department a success. Even with these great numbers, we're always looking for more volunteers. Stay tuned to the city's social media for an exciting recruiting push. The Department of Senior Services continues to strive for improved communication to members through the use of social media, automated calls, texts, messages, emails, printed flyers, and newsletters. The implementation of new features on the department's membership software has allowed staff to send out reminders and notices to members and volunteers, which have resulted in that increased utilization of services and the number of visits logged at the Center on the Lake. Senior Services staff and volunteers continue to host and participate in various community events, such as Christmas in July, Halloween Carnival, and the Holiday Parade. If you haven't checked out the Center on the Lake for you or your loved ones, you're doing both you and them a disservice. Led by Director Mike Hogan, Public Works and its multiple divisions, including Animal Services, Building Fleet and Grounds Maintenance, Streets and Sanitation, with all forty-five employees, are poised for another industrious year. In 2019, we saw some long overdue improvements to the stormwater drainage system on Victoria Circle and a badly needed overlay project on that street. Public Works is also in the final stages of a stormwater drainage project in North Mammell on Frontier Drive, designed to prevent standing water in the roadway and to show some love to an area of town that most people think is outside the city limits. For 2019, the City Council approved $400,000 for street infrastructure overlays, which is a hundred thousand more than in prior years. As such, we saw additional street improvement overlay projects on streets such as Woodland, Stone Ledge, Riverwood, Barber, and portions of Arnold Palmer. The City Council again approved $400,000 for overlays this year, and I'm proud to announce that the Arkansas State Aid City Street Committee recently approved $300,000 in funding to overlay a portion of Odom North. We still need a thorough analysis of the annual funding necessary to maintain or improve our current conditions of city streets over the long run. To do this, we need a thorough audit of the condition of our streets, the rate of their deterioration, and the estimated cost for improvement. This last year, we explored various technologies and services that could provide us with the data needed to make these informed decisions. However, additional exploration is required before we find the perfect fit for Mammell. While we were on the topic of roads, a proposed roundabout at Odom South and Club Manor, including nearby including nearby storm drain replacement and the construction of additional pedestrian improvements, was engineered and bids were received. The total cost of that project was $1.2 million and was presented to the City Council. The City Council elected to table the roundabout in favor of a more thorough study of that intersection. The Cindy Engineer is currently completing his report and recommendations, which will be presented to the City Council this year. Early this year, soon. While on the topic of roundabouts, engineers are currently studying a potential connection of Country Club Parkway and White Oak Crossing in order to recommend a solution to a growing traffic problem. One aspect of that analysis that I’m particularly proud of is the city’s effort to solicit feedback from residents and businesses at the front end of this project. The city’s recent online poll received 1,257 responses, and we found that 54% of those respondents either liked or extremely liked roundabouts, and only 25% disliked or extremely disliked them, with 21% reporting that they neither liked nor disliked them. The preferred solution appears to be a roundabout connecting the two roads, but we will know more soon. Perhaps the primary reason we’re even discussing an enhanced connection between Country Club Parkway and White Oak Crossing is the opening of the White Oak Crossing interchange at I-40. Last year, I promised that the interchange would be open for business by Christmas, so I was delighted to see it open early November. That recent poll I mentioned earlier also showed that 84% of respondents believe the White Oak Crossing interchange has reduced traffic on Mammell Boulevard. We’ve received reports that the interchange has reduced some residents’ commute by 10 or 15 minutes each way, resulting in 20 to 30 extra minutes’ time to be with your family. This interchange has been discussed and planned in Mammell for decades, and so it was a great honor to be part of its completion. In 2012, Mammell voters approved the issuance of approximately $3.2 million in bonds to widen and rebuild portions of Crystal Hill Road and a short portion of Countess Massey Road that intersects it, both of which are, of course, inside the city limits. Last year, we decided to scale the project down from a four-lane road with a roundabout to a two-lane road with a median and turning lanes. This will save taxpayer money, but it required a redesign of the road. Now, originally, my goal was to have shovels in the ground last fall. Clearly, we didn’t meet that goal due to engineer delays and difficulties in acquiring the necessary rights of ways. We are only just now seeing construction begin with Central Arkansas Water’s relocation of a water main, which will then hopefully immediately be followed by construction on the road proper. The long-awaited Adaptive Traffic Signal Control System, which involves updating traffic signals along Mammell Boulevard, is under construction and should be completed within a few months. Contractors have, of course, run into a few issues during Phase 1 installation that has caused some delays and occasional outages of the traffic signals, but these issues were often able to be repaired quickly. Sufficient lighting along city streets is an important public safety issue, and we found that too many existing lights are not functioning properly. We have not come up with an adequate solution to this problem, despite a lot of time and effort by myself and my Chief of Staff in cooperation with Entergy representatives. We continue to seek a solution to identify, report, and track outages to ensure that they’re being repaired in a timely manner. I must admit that the failure to solve this problem is probably my biggest shortcoming of 2019, but hey, here’s to 2020. Thank you for that joke, Rachel. I heard a couple chuckles. Last year, we began and completed the Edgewood Sidewalks Project, which greatly increased walkability around City Hall, the Library, and Charter School. We don’t have any big new sidewalk or walking path projects slated for this year, though we do have some plans for improvements to existing sidewalks and paths. One goal for this year is the creation of a master pedestrian and bicycle plan so that we can strategically improve our trails, walkways, and bicycle paths. I’m proud to announce that our 2017 grant application for a flood mitigation project was recently approved by FEMA, which will cover 75% of this $4 million project. This project will improve drainage on a tributary of Marshay Creek designed to prevent flooding to 120-unit apartment complex, 160-town homes, and 16 single-family residences. If this project progresses as anticipated, engineering will be substantially complete this year, with construction beginning late this year or early next year. That is, of course, if the project progresses as anticipated. It would be a shame to fail to note that when the Arkansas River was flooding, your Public Works employees, and employees from a lot of other departments, worked tirelessly to protect homes from flooding by providing sand in sandbags, filling sandbags, and actually delivering filled sandbags to the most vulnerable homes. How many cities do you know that do that? The Animal Services Division of Public Works saw 26 fewer animals enter their doors as compared to 2018. Out of the 528 animals that entered the shelter, 525 left through owner reclamation, adoption, or went to a rescue. In addition to canines and felines, numerous chickens and guinea pigs also entered the animal shelter. Mammell Animal Services live release rate for 2019 was 97%, and there were zero rabies cases in the city. Mammell Animal Services continues its close relationship with the nonprofit organization Mammell Friends of the Animals, including programs such as Comfort a Pet, which took place on 4th of July during the fireworks show, and had over 180 people in attendance. Again, a special thank you goes out to the Mammell Friends of the Animals for their continuing support of Animal Services. As usual, the sanitation division has been busy over this last year. We’re adding a new automated sanitationist truck and have added several new positions. We found that staffing difficulties in the sanitation division affects Public Works operations all across the department, and short-term personnel shortages in the sanitation division require a reallocation of personnel from other Public Works divisions, which in turn puts those divisions behind. After all, trash pickup must go on. In 2019, single-stream recycling amounted to 520 tons. Transfer station staff baled and sold 95 bales of cardboard, 5.8 tons of mixed plastics, nearly 1,300 pounds of steel cans, and nearly 23 tons of mixed paper. In total, the sanitation crew disposed of 5,462 tons of curbside solid waste and 500 tons of transfer station solid waste. Curbside yard waste totaled 5,325 cubic yards, and transfer station yard waste totaled 1,760 cubic yards. 2019 was the first full year the city’s sanitation fees were billed and collected by Central Arkansas Water, which resulted in approximately a $60,000 increase to our bottom line. And this brings us to the Finance Department, led by Director Shannon Vega. Being prepared for a timely audit continues to be a problem for Finance. The department underwent a reorganization last year and added new accountants, steps that we believe are necessary to get the department caught up and running like a finely-tuned machine. Finance is continuing its efforts to streamline tasks, to improve efficiency, and internal controls within that department. Starting last year, the department moved to a paperless environment, resulting in quicker and easier access to information needed for daily business, research, and audits. Finance has played a pivotal role in our ongoing deployment of new budgeting and financial reporting software that, once fully implemented, will allow for greater long-term financial planning and transparency of the city’s financial affairs. This is an ongoing process. City Clerk Treasurer Tina Timmons and the Finance Director worked hard throughout the year to make sure that the Clerk’s Office and the Finance Department coordinated their efforts and worked together as a team. Best practices were sought and implemented in both departments. As part of that effort, the deputy city clerk received additional training in order to assist the Finance Department with daily operations as needed. The city clerk obtained her designation as a certified municipal official from the Arkansas Municipal League, where she also completed her second year as an advisor for cities of the first class. The city’s phone contracts were renegotiated, resulting in monthly savings while still maintaining the same level of service. The city realized these savings by converting to voiceover IP. The second phase of the conversion was installed at the Parks and Recreation in City Hall, and the final phase will be completed this year. In 2019, city attorney Melissa Krebs prosecuted all misdemeanors, traffic violations, and ordinance violations in Mammell District Court, resulting in 3,205 charges processed, an increase of nearly 1,000 over 2018. She handled truancy matters for Pine Forest Elementary, Mammell Middle School, and Mammell High School through the Pulaski County Juvenile Court System, representing the city in hearings twice a month. Petitions involving 15 individual students were initiated during 2019. The city attorney also litigated or oversaw litigation in civil matters involving the city. In 2019, there was no new civil litigation cases filed against the city. The 2018 case of Jennifer Corvus v. the City of Mammell, which concerns the method of payment of overtime compensation, remained inactive litigation and is set for trial this year. The city attorney provided regular legal advice to the council, the mayor, and city employees and commissioners during regular office hours in the context of regular meetings and on an on-call basis. She assisted in the preparation of the majority of 70 ordinances and resolutions that were considered last year. She also remained actively involved in the regular operations of the city, providing counsel on many code enforcement, planning, contractual, personnel, and policy matters. The city attorney’s purpose remains to defend and pursue the interests of the city and to assist in achieving its goals while first and foremost protecting the rights of its citizens.
Intermission?
The Mammell District Court, led by Judge Rudy Bailey, entered dispositions in over 3,200 cases. The court collected $193,000 in fines and $17,000 in probation fees. It also entered judgment in 32 civil and small claims cases last year. The court is most proud of the timely completion of the upload of data to the state pertaining to individuals that owe past due fines and court costs in order to participate in the state’s set-off program. This program allows the court to collect past due fines and fees by essentially putting a lien on that debtor’s state tax refund. The state then collects those funds, to the extent they become available, and forwards those funds directly to the court. This year, the court plans on implementing an amnesty program to allow those individuals who have outstanding failure to comply or contempt of court warrants to come to court and surrender themselves on those warrants without the fear of being jailed or assessed additional fines and costs. It will give those eligible for the program the opportunity to essentially start over and get on the right track regarding their responsibility to the court, be it financial or otherwise. In January of this year, Director Keisha Walker joined the city as the new Director of Human Resources. Last year, HR assisted in an extensive salary study and analysis to evaluate the city’s overall compensation packages. Human Resources recommended, and the City Council approved, salary adjustments for those positions that were the most underpaid, but we still find it difficult to compete on salaries with comparable cities. HR hosted the city’s 11th Annual Employee Appreciation Day, where 25 full-time employees were recognized for their years of service. Most notably, Linda Byrd with the Mammell Police Department was recognized for 25 years of service with the city. Last year, in an effort to recognize some of our outstanding employees, I created the Mammell—the mayor’s—I created the Mayor’s Employee of the Month Program, where the city’s highest-achieving employees were recognized for their contribution. This program has been a success, and the 2019 Employee of the Year will be announced soon. The Parks and Recreation Department, led by Director Philip Rayburn, strives to improve upon the services offered to citizens of Mammell while contributing to the overall sense of community here. Parks and Rec membership numbers decreased 4.6% last year, though the community consistently served over 3,000 paying members annually, who utilized the facility’s indoor walking track, its basketball, pickleball, and tennis ball courts, its cardio and weight room, as well as the aquatic center. Parks and Rec continues to be involved in countless community events, such as the Mammell’s Annual Fourth Fest, the Daddy Daughter Valentine Dance, and Mother-Son Date Night Dance, the City of Mammell’s Veterans Day and Memorial Day ceremonies, and the Halloween Haunted House and Carnival, with the proceeds benefiting the Mammell Youth Council. This last year has seen improvements at Lake Willistine, including extensive dirt work, irrigation, sod addition, and curbing to complete the Phase 4 improvements. The Lake Willistine Pavilion saw steady use throughout the warmer weather months, and at least one, and sometimes multiple, events are facilitated there every weekend. The May 2019 flooding of the Arkansas River wreaked havoc on the grounds of the park on the river, where over six feet of water washed away sod, destroyed fencing, and nearly carried away the floating dock. Parks personnel relocated, repaired, and reinstalled the dock, and opened up the lower area of the park on the river. We did receive FEMA grant funds to help with the completion of repairs—to the fence and sod—and the installation of sod. For 2020, the Parks and Rec Department intends to construct a new splash pad with the hopes of completion before summer’s end, while continuing its assistance in fundraising for Mammell’s all-inclusive playground, where kids and families of all ages can learn, grow, and play. Following the retirement of Jim Morley, the longtime director of building code enforcement permits, Trent Carter was promoted to run this department. 2019, single-family residential housing took a slight dip, with 66 new permits issued versus 79 last year. The total number of permits was down 200 over last year to a total of 2,056, and permit revenues were down 22% to $187,000. Just as last year, there were 12 commercial remodel permits issued. There were two new commercial construction permits, one for Ten Fitness’s new corporate headquarters near Lake Valencia, and one for the Kimberly-Clark expansion, for which the city authorized the issuance of up to $110 million in industrial development revenue bonds. In 2019, code enforcement issued 676 requests for compliance tags, 24 citations to appear in Mammell District Court, and 26 stormwater notices of violation. Going forward into 2020, the department will continue to strive for excellence in dealing with citizens and contractors by helping them understand the need for permitting and inspection of construction work to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the One week ago today, the Department of Planning and Zoning, the city, and our community suffered the loss of Jim Nary, who served as the Planning and Zoning Director for the last 17 years. In his final report on the state of planning and zoning, Jim reported to me the following: “New commercial development was on the upswing for 2019. There were approvals of Diamond Park Commercial, which is a convenience store car wash complex at Diamond Park Lane and White Oak Crossing. There was the Benson Park Edition, a 14,414-square-foot commercial center on Country Club Parkway. And there was the Albright Commercial, the 2.48-acre commercial center also located on Country Club Parkway.” In October 2019, plans were approved for the Ten Fitness Company to locate its corporate headquarters of the company adjacent to City Hall on Valencia Drive. There were also expansions of existing businesses, such as Mammell U Storage and Kimberly-Clark. Mammell City Stormwater Management Program was audited last year by the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality for the second time in 10 years, with no discrepancies. We also received an audit from FEMA for the City Floodplain Management Program, again with no discrepancies reported, and we received a commendation— with no discrepancies reported, and we received a commendation from the Region Six Headquarters. This was the first time ever for Maumell to receive an audit from FEMA and ADEQ in And in Jim's own words, "No year would be complete, it seems, if the Planning Commission didn't consider plans for a new church to locate in Maumell, and 2019 was no exception. Calvary Chapel Church, Pastor Brad Wood, will be located in the space previously occupied by US Pizza. For the time being, Chief of Staff Scott Grummer will take on Jim's responsibilities, but it may prove time for some intra- and interdepartmental restructuring to better accomplish our mission. One thing that is clear is that our planning and zoning ordinances are in desperate need of updating." One of the primary goals of Community and Economic Development, led by Director Judy Keller, is business retention and expansion. Part of these efforts include city-hosted quarterly business luncheons with local industrial leaders. Business retention and expansion visits are ongoing, and help city staff identify areas of concern or need. Two existing industries are considering significant expansions in 2020, and Kimberly-Clark is currently adding 68,000 square feet. This year, Kimberly-Clark will be celebrating 30 years in operation at the Maumell facility. In addition to manufacturing electronic connectors, Molex produces medical equipment. This required some extensive renovations in the existing facility. In 2019, Molex initiated a rebranding of the Maumell facility, and it is now Phillips Medicise, a Molex company. The city began working with Entergy and the owners of 121-acre industrial site in 2018 to obtain Entergy's Certified Select Site recognition. Those efforts culminated in November of 2019 with the recognition of the site as a certified select site. With the wetland delineation, archaeological studies, environmental Phase One study, and various other reports already completed, the property and community are more competitive than ever when a company is looking to relocate. Already this year, the site is under review by three separate industries. I'm hopeful that there will be a big announcement concerning the industrial park in the coming months, but as is often the case in these situations, everything is just so darn top The City of Maumell continues to partner with Metro Little Rock Alliance, who markets the 12-county region around central Arkansas. The city worked closely with the entire MLRA team to select a marketing company to develop a website and strategy to promote the region and bring awareness to the opportunities available here. One of the strategies was a familiarization tour of the region for a group of out-of-state consultants. The city participated in several meetings and outings with the consulting, including a tour of the Maumell Industrial Park and the recently certified select site. The city also partners with the Maumell Area Chamber of Commerce to provide community and economic development support. The Director of Community and Economic Development and I both serve as advisors to the Board of Directors. Both the city and chamber staff continue to collaborate on a wide array of activities, including the rebranding of the North Maumell Area, discussions with the owners of Track D to market and develop that site, planning for the implementation of Ford Next Generation Learning in all the school districts in Plaski County, recruiting new businesses and assisting them as they settle in Maumell, assisting existing businesses to help them grow, and a wide variety of community-building events such as the Business Expo and State of the City Luncheon, the Bash on the Boulevard, and much, much more. The city is taking a more collaborative, holistic, and aggressive approach to planning and recruiting retail, restaurant, entertainment, and commercial entities to the city. One example of our new approach is the North Maumell Small Area Planning Initiative we have underway, to bring together and engage stakeholders to establish a path for revitalization strategies in that part of the city. In closing, 2019 was a productive year, with the city's crowning achievement being the completion of the White Oak Crossing interchange. Our theme or motto at City Hall this year is simple: excellence. We want Maumell to excel. We want to create an excellent city to live, work, and play, and we believe that we can do that if we strive for excellence in all that we do. The phrase "that's good enough" isn't. Good enough just isn't good enough. We want excellence. Maumell deserves excellence. Thank you for your time, and God bless. For those that are just dying to hear this again, the State of the City Luncheon will be Thursday at noon in the South Room. Contact the chamber, I don't know if you guys have any seats left available. There will be a fun little announcement that no one knows about.
Catered by Cheers.
Catered by Cheers. Following that will be the Maumell Business Expo and Job Fair. Listen, if you haven't had a chance to go to that before, find some time to visit. Also, at 6:00 PM, following, this is next Thursday, at 6:00 PM, I'll be going live on Facebook to answer some of the questions that anybody may have about the state of the city. We found last year when we went live, people would ask questions, and we weren't able to dialogue, so people can either ask their questions during the live event at noon, or they can log in at 6:00 and just pummel me with whatever questions they want, including y'all, but I may not answer your questions. With that, I think I still have my voice, which is impressive, but we will move on to the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the February 18th regular meeting.
Offered.
We have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Public comment, I have one public comment card that looks like it is on Ordinance 993, so we'll address that at that time. I decided to spare y'all a department report, since you just got a bunch of department reports, at least one person's happy. We'll move on to the Planning Commission report, which would be Councilmember Tierney.
Hi. This might take a little less time than the last report did. With the passing of Planning Commissioner Jim Nary, Chief of Staff Scott Grummer stood in as temporary director, and he did an excellent job. He ran very smooth meetings and did a great, I think he'll be recognized for the work that he did. The current chairman, vice chairman, and secretary were re-elected to another term. There are four items that came before the Planning Commission, and all four will soon be coming to the council. The revised preliminary plat for the M at White Oak Crossing had several changes made to its 30 lots. Adjustments like access to the fire department, truck, trash truck access, utilities easement, and an easement for an open, currently undeveloped space were made. An issue raised by the city attorney that I thought was significant because of the problems we had last year with Savannah Drive was about who would be responsible for the private land, roads, and fences should the owner, you know, pass away or no longer be go bankrupt, no longer be able to take care of that, and so she requested a plan to transition be put in place, you know, for those future developments. Now, there will be no building or future phases until the final plat is approved, which will require an emergency access that is up to code to the fire department. So this is just a change of the preliminary plat and the, you know, preliminary plat, and also the preliminary developmental plan for the M, that were both given a due pass and recommendations. The second, the other two items that were involved, involved the 2.6-acre tract, a property between White Oaks and the ballpark, and had two zoning requests, rezoning requests. This property is identifiable because so many developers have dumped waste materials on it in the past, it's right there with White Oaks and the Country Club Parkway. The first request was to amend the Maumell Master Use Plan from an SUR special use residential to commercial. The second amendment was for that same property, and is a request for it to be rezoned from a PRD planned residential development into a commercial C3. There were two residents who spoke in opposition to these changes and wanted the property kept residential. One said that she represented about 25 other residents who were unable to attend. The planning staff recommended to proceed, since the property could still be used for a different type of commercial, or even an apartment complex, which would add to traffic congestion, which was a concern expressed by the citizens in opposition. Staff felt that a C3 zoning would give the city better control over whatever type of commercial enterprise goes in that location. Because right now, I mean, they could have put an apartment complex on there, which would really, you know, create a lot of problems, but this way we'd keep better control, what kind of business is in there, and so that the owner had indicated that a C3 would be appropriate for whatever use that is, we don't know what it's going to be yet. The change from an SUR special use residential to commercial passed unanimously. The change from a PRD planned residential district to a C3 passed by a vote of 6 to 1. They were both given a due pass recommendations from the council. Also, another note, in the earlier meeting of, in the month in the Blue Room, at the conclusion of that meeting, Acting Director Scott Grummer also gave an update on efforts to spur economic development in the North Maumell Mortgage Area, and updated us with how he is currently attempting to get owners to meet and work together on a plan.
Thank you for that very thorough report, Mr. Tierney. These will be in your council packet, they're scheduled to be in your council packet at the next city council meeting. Please take a look at the staff report, as it was fairly thorough. Councilmember Mosley.
Yes, who was, who was leading the citizen group that was opposing that rezoning?
Well, there wasn't, there were two speakers, I did not catch their names, though.
Okay.
Yeah, they were residents.
All right. Thank you.
We, if you need those, I bet you could contact Mr. Grummer, they'll probably have those in the minutes that aren't formally approved yet, but they shouldn't have them somewhere.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We'll move on to unfinished business. We have the second reading of Ordinance 993 amending the annual registration fees. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Plaski County, Arkansas, and ordinance of the City of Maumell, Arkansas, amending the annual registration fees for businesses and designating said fees to be paid into the police and fire fund.
So at the outset, y'all should have got a copy of, I want to say, councilmembers, Tierneys' memos. Those, I intended to include those in the council packet last meeting, and didn't do that, and then with the chaos that was ensuing last week, I didn't get that added either. I do have a public comment card on that. Ms. Alicia Gillan, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I talk fast. Alicia Gillan, 68 Jasmine Cove, Mama, Arkansas, representing the Mama Area Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, all. I do just want to kind of reemphasize what the mission is of the Chamber of Commerce, is that we advocate for businesses in the area and do support the success of their growth and prosperity. And so whenever this motion was read at the last time, Ms. Michael Tierney had mentioned some questions regarding the chamber and the involvement, and so I just wanted to kind of officially set the record that at this time, we have not received any formal proposal to the chamber from Mr. Tierney. I am representing myself, but I also have a board of 12 who do sit on that and who do make those recommendations formally. So if that's something that he would like to present, we'd be more than happy to come back with that after our board meeting. But one of the things that I do, talking with my executive counsel, do want to kind of reemphasize is that while this is a very important topic, and looking at it, that we really need to look at all of the business fees, you know, the franchise fees, and everything that is associated with opening a business here in Maumell. We really want to be open for business. We really want that if a business is coming to our area, that they are streamlining all of those procedures that go along with it, and that we make it as easy as possible for them to get started quickly, and then open up for our residents in our community. So possibly a task force that we can look at all of them together, instead of just pulling out one particular piece, maybe working and looking at it more holistically, I think would be a good recommendation, and something that we talked about. Again, we want to support our businesses, and we want to make it as easy as possible for them to continue, and also not induce a lot of additional fees throughout the entire way, because if you go ahead and pull back the layers of what we currently have, there's a lot there. This is just one of them, and so I can ask you to really take a look at all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. This is on second reading. Is there any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, I'd like to reiterate what Alicia had just said, that, you know, my conversations with them were just casual, just kind of letting them know what I was doing, it was not intended to be an indication of a formal endorsement on their part. I have heard from several people, you know, a lot of people who have supported it, had a couple people who questioned like where the money should go to, some people, well, like at the last meeting, Councilmember Holt suggested maybe to, you know, the trees and, you know, planting the trees, and then other people had suggested maybe going back to the general fund, another had suggested maybe to the Parks and Recreation, and I just kind of want to reiterate why I was saying to put this towards the police and fire, because one, you know, that is like our biggest budget item on the, you know, the expenses that we have for the year, and two, you know, we also are competing against other neighboring cities in all of our, you know, pay in the, you know, Little Rock and North Rock both pay, you know, much better than what they do, so, you know, want to try to keep these guys as supportive as we can. Plus, two, there was a second point, was, and I think I mentioned this the last time, the scoff law businesses. Little Rock had like 20 to 25% scoff laws before we made, you know, I was a part of that committee that made that change, and that was drastically reduced, because a business license fee, you know, business license is something you're supposed to put up for the public to see, and that's almost a way that local businesses will be saying, hey, I support our local police and fire. So, you know, that was, you know, kind of long-term thinking. Plus, two, with that long-term thinking, soon we're going to be having an official review from the elected officials' pay scales, that we'll be adjusting all elected official pays for like the next couple of years. So between that and the police, you know, we're, the big area that we think we still need to address in the next year's budget is going to be city employees. And so, you know, this is kind of like trying to take care of everything that we can ahead of time, and then hopefully we're going to see a big increase. One and two months are not a pattern, but right now it looks like revenues are going to be up this year, so hopefully next year when it comes to budget time, then our focus will all be on city employees. So that was, you know, my thoughts, you know, for this day.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was, I was reading, Mr. Tierney, your comments there on your proposal, and the first three paragraphs, I just wanted to make sure I understand what I'm reading here. You said, "I'm not proposing a new tax. This resolution has tended to recoup a long-established revenue stream that we stopped collecting over the last couple of years." Are you referring to the community service fee?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, we, in the past, you know, we charged a low $25 to $100 base, you know, varying on the size of the businesses, and then the rest of the fee was made up on a square footage chart that, you know, however big the business was, then you paid another fee in towards the community service fee, and that was part of your business license fee. Well, when that went away with the new half-cent sales tax, the major part of what businesses paid went away too, and we just stuck with just the basis, you know, the basic amount. Like in Little Rock and North of Rock, you pay a basic fee, which is what we have here, because the basic fee, like in North of Rock is like 180, I think Little Rock's about the same thing, or maybe just a little bit less. Where here in Maumell, it's like 20 to 100. So our base fee is so much lower, but, you know, we're, as opposed to in Little Rock and North of Rock, they're paying a percentage of your inventory. You figure out how much your inventory is average over the year, then you pay a percentage of that on top of the base fee. See, we have nothing on top of the base fee here.
Okay.
This was just proposing just doubling the base fee to try to offset those lost revenues.
All right, so what we lost was, was the percentage of square footage and that sort of thing?
Correct.
Do you have any idea how much that was?
I could not get a figure on that. I did ask.
It can be calculated, so for residential homes, the community service fee, we paid a flat $6 a month. For commercial entities, they paid a per-square-foot fee that, it's been so long since I took a look at it, but I want to say there was one industry that paid $10,000 a year on that, and so those numbers can be tracked down, we don't have them just easy to punch up, but they were pretty significant chunks for larger industries.
Would it be $50,000, you think, total?
I don't, $50,000 citywide?
Citywide, yeah.
Industry-wide, oh yeah, I think. So you have to look at what that...
The commercial, yeah.
The commercial industrial side.
All right. So basically, they got a little bit of a break, and it's being made up by the sales tax. All right, I think I understand that then. All right. Also, could I ask the city clerk, I was appointed to, since I, and I appreciate the legal opinion by the city attorney there, I can, I can talk tonight about this, so. Anyway, I was... So anyway, I was wondering if, could you, could you expound on, on what the requirements are for somebody that wants a home-based business or who may not want it, but who should be filing to become a home-based business? The low impact, uh, should it be something as, as simple as a, as making phone calls for your business or does it need to be a business that that's their established address of work or what? Can you, can you expound on that?
Yes, uh, councilmember Mosley, you have a good grasp of, of it. If you do not have a alternate, uh, location, um, for your business and you are conducting a business in your home, whether it's something as simple as making phone calls or sending taxes, that would be, and that's how you generate your income, that would be considered a low-impact, but a home-based business, which would, uh, we would prefer that you get a business license, but of course, there's no way for us to track that.
Okay. Do you get, by any chance, do you get, uh, lists from the state of, uh, businesses that are registered out here in Maumell that you can check back and do you, do you follow up on the differences?
It's actually the other way around. The county usually, they'll contact me and ask, it's case-by-case basis, but they call us just to verify the legitimacy of a business. But no, I do not contact the state nor do I contact the county.
Okay, well, let me, let me clarify that. You'd said if you don't have an alternative location.
Well, if you...
What does that mean?
If you think about it, some people may work for home essentially, but that's not where the business is located. So you're, so that wouldn't be considered a home-based business because they actually conduct business at a different address than their regular residence.
Okay.
So if they were, if they, uh, if they do not have an alternative location of, um, besides their residence that they live, then that's considered a home-based business.
What if they work, uh, represent, they're a sales rep, for example, uh, representing a company out of Tulsa, but, uh, they, they call on customers, so they really don't need an office, they just work out of their house? Is that something they would need to?
That would be, in my opinion, considered a low-impact business because they are conducting business at their home and that's how they generate the income. Because that's sort of a gray area, I would defer to the city attorney for, uh, her opinion. But as, as you just asked, I would say that would be a low-impact business, so a business license.
Okay. Okay. That helps me out. Uh, that's all I've got. Go ahead.
For anyone who is interested in looking at this, this is, uh, the registration fee that we're considering right now, which is twenty-six dash one. And that refers to, uh, the definition of a home-based business. It refers back to ninety-four dash five seventy-two, um, which has a, a definition for home business or occupation, which means an accessory use of a dwelling unit involving the manufacturer, provision, or sale of goods and/or services, which is carried on by members of the immediate family residing on the premises. Um, it has some additional information there about when garage sales and yard sales are accepted from that. And then it goes on to divide into low-impact or moderate-impact, um, businesses and occupations. But for anyone who wants to, um, just check that out and do a little more analysis of it, that's the definition that we have in our code.
Thank you. Were you finished, councilmember Mosley?
Uh, I would just, I would just say, uh, I've, I've been thinking about this and I haven't made a decision yet, but I'm probably going to be leaning toward a no vote on this just, uh, because what I ran on was to keep taxes and, uh, spending low here in Maumell the best I could. And I, I just, uh, that, that sounds kind of like a tax increase a little bit, so, so that would be the, the reason I would, would disagree. But I'm going to think about the, the offsetting components of doing away with the community service fee and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
Um, Ms. Gillen referred to the entire cost of starting a business in Maumell and what the, uh, recurring cost for that business would be. And I would just be curious, uh, to know how much that onion comprised. Uh, so I, I, I don't know how long it would take to gather that information before making a decision on something like this.
Ask your question again.
Um, what is the true startup cost for a business or annual cost for a business? I mean, we're talking about, um, you know, the one component of it, but I'm just curious what the other components of it might be and what that might add up to be for a small business locating here.
If we're, if we're talking about fees paid to the city, it is, the, the, it's going to be these fees if you're opening up a business, right? So you're developing, uh, uh, land, you're going to have your fees to plat, um, for all the, your building permit fees, those sort of things. Those are all going to be based on almost, not all of them, but almost exclusively based on the square footage, what you're doing, what you're building. Um, and the like, for someone who's opening up a business to go into an already existing, um, deal, I think you just have that and then your assigned permit fee that I can think of off the top of my head. And someone's lip syncing something to me from the back.
Also, she's some franchise fee, franchise fees or other fees.
That's a, and of course, franchise fees, which is four point two-five percent directly passed on to the consumer, but if we're considering that a business expense, then sure.
Okay.
You'd include those. And, and we have, we, we'd get into a very, uh, deep analysis on that.
And like councilmember Mosley, I'd like to know what the net difference is between, um, what the community service fee might have done and, I mean, just even if it's ballpark, just some...
I can give you, I can give you all the formulas to figure that out, but again, it, it differed based on the size of the building.
And so, so we didn't have like a list of saying Molex pays this and Target pays this and Dillard's pays this. We don't have anything like that.
We, we could look back at what they paid.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have a list like that, so it was all based on the square footage of the building.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
But we, we could, we could find some of those out for an example, um, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I just wondered if it was a net loss to us when we cut the community service fee.
A net gain of a half.
But for the business.
For the businesses.
For the business.
Cash cow.
Okay.
Uh, it, it benefited them. All right, I don't say that like it's a bad thing.
Yeah.
I'm just...
Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Holt?
Just out of curiosity, I have a, the opportunity Wednesday afternoon to negotiate or to mediate between a next-door neighbor and a man who openly admits that he runs a, um, uh, home, a business out of his home. Uh, there is no equipment in the home or anything. It has to do with parking of the truck and they've already visited with code enforcement and code enforcement. It has nothing to do with this except that they've assured him that he's not breaking the law, but it's an uncomfortable situation. But my point is, he is very open and, and told the next-door neighbor that he runs, um, a, a home-operated business. So is that there won't be any merchandise? He parks his truck and trailer and all that kind of stuff. So would they just pay a flat fee for having it? I mean, there, there'll be no merchandise of any kind that's inside the building, his home. So, but he, he says, and, and also, I mean, that's what he does. He leaves, he's in landscaping. So he has that truck and trailer and it leaves out there in the morning and takes phone calls and I don't know what he does in his home, but paperwork maybe. I'm just wondering, would people like him who do that kind of work, they also have a home-operated business and should pay a fee? Is that, are we right?
It sounds like what you're saying would be the twenty-five, the currently twenty-five dollar home-based business fee. So my wife runs a business out of the home, um, and she pays twenty-five dollars a year. And then if she's hosting an event and needs a banner permit or a signed permit, she'll fill those out on as needed.
I don't know if he's come to city hall and told them, you know, to announce it. He may have chosen not to, but it's not a big thing. I just wondered in listening to private, in business out of your home and paying the fees. Cause we should get it all. I mean, whoever it is, I mean, nobody should...
There, there are also some, um, businesses that have a vehicle like that that are required, depending on what you do, if it's a portable business that's on wheels, like a dog groomer that, that operates out of a van, they could be required in, to purchase a transient merchant permit because of the portable nature of the business. So I guess for most instances, they would have to get approval, um, from code enforcement if they're going to have a commercial vehicle of a certain size parked outside the residence. But, um, otherwise generally, I guess that the home-based business fee would apply, but there are some, some instances where it would be higher if they are, fall into the transient merchant category.
He may have gotten, I don't, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't approach that and didn't think about it. They, he would be responsible to at least applying and asking about it, right?
Yes.
I'll inform him of that. Thank you, Mr. M. Love.
Do a good job mediating if you lead off with that. Um, councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to, uh, uh, city clerk's definition again of a, of a business that doesn't have a primary location elsewhere. Uh, and wanted to ask the, uh, city attorney if she's comfortable with that because it doesn't, actually, from what I can tell in the code under low-impact business, it doesn't mention that. It almost sounds like something that's your policy, uh, as to how to enforce that.
And we did discuss this today, you know, in discussing your question. Um, so I guess part of this goes to my experience and the fact that it does have to be a home-based business for this registration fee, um, and then it, it refers to this definition of home business or occupation. But for example, I have always had an office somewhere in central Arkansas, uh, either in the Stevens Building or here at city hall or wherever. I also occasionally work from home. I work all the time here for this job, but for Stevens, I would occasionally work on a day when my children were sick or something while I was at home. That, my business was not based at my house because I had an office elsewhere, um, and, and those were businesses that were based out of other locations. If you have a business that you are running out of your house, I think we were kind of in agreement that, um, that's a home-based business. If, if you don't have any, uh, you know, another office that you operate out of, then you're operating that business out of your house and, and that's how we would interpret that.
Okay, so you, you agree, you all are in agreement on that?
Yes.
On that location aspect. Yeah, I thought, I'd remembered, I remember visiting with the previous city clerk and at least my memory from probably seven or eight years ago when I signed up was that I think he said, if you do anything out of your house that, that makes you money, even, you know, if you, if you're, if you get a phone call while you're at home, then you're, you're making money. You're, you're doing something toward your business and he said you would need to. But that was his interpretation of it at the time, so, uh, if I remembered it correctly. So anyway, I just want to differentiate it based on what we're doing now. So, thank you.
Councilmember Tierney?
I'd also like to point out that we're exempting an entire group of people from having to pay a business license fee. Uh, anybody under age of sixteen that they can't drive to a job, if they want to have a lemonade stand, no business license fee. So, you know, young kids that want to go out there and mow a yard or lemonade stand, there's not going to be a fee on them. I've heard of horror stories in other, uh, cities where kids got in a lot of trouble for trying to sell lemonade stands and, you know, we're giving them an exemption.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
Good. Good manners. Um, there's two or three things I'd like to say about this. Unlike councilmember Mosley, I'm leaning towards no on this. Uh, one of my problems with this is it's a little hard to explain. You know, for some people, I know reality's reality. I'm an engineer, okay? But for some people, perception is reality. And I have worked with a lot of businesses in central Arkansas, in fact, all over Arkansas and partially in the five-state area. I had the second-largest real estate appraisal company in Arkansas, my second career. So I was looking at their books all the time. I was talking to business owners continuously. And in central Arkansas, especially Little Rock and North Little Rock, there is a perception there that Little Rock and North Little Rock is snatch and grab for every penny they can get from you. And they don't make anything easy. Now, that's the perception. I don't know about reality. But for those people, that is their reality. Now, looking at Maumell, one of the perceptions about Maumell is, for example, our housing and we're so expensive here. It's not true. Houses are more expensive than Little Rock they are here, I can tell you. Okay? Per square foot average. Um, I would hate to see us, we are a growing community and I would like to see our business community continue to grow. It's not the harder we make it and the more we charge them, the worse the perception's going to be and the less people are going to want to come here. If anything, we need to make it easier on them, to encourage them to come here. Now, I don't want to send this message out that we're, we are not financially in bad shape in this city. We are in good shape, really. We don't need the money, so why do we need to snatch and grab more money? I don't want to send that perception out there. Now, something that Alicia said that kind of caught my attention was a task force because there are other issues besides just fees that probably need to be addressed. I would much rather see us form a task force and explore all the issues and maybe make changes in all the areas where we need it, not just pick on fees. At least at that point, we're not giving the perception that we're snatching grabbing money here in Maumell. We already, I have had people actually tell me, tell me, in the ten years I've sat here many times, we're financially not in good shape. And I try to tell them, that is not true. We're financially healthy in this city. So I don't really want to do things that's going to encourage that kind of perception. So right now, I would have to lean, I, I'd be happy to vote yes on setting up a task force to explore the whole system and maybe improve it. And if, I have heard a rumor that Jim Nary was working towards that direction. Okay? Um, but I don't know that I could support just coming along and raising the fees on these potential new businesses. I kind of like Conway's where they don't have fees, except ice cream vendors. But I kind of, I kind of wish we could do that. I'm not suggesting we do, but I'd like, that would encourage more business, not discourage it. Okay? So I've said my piece. Thank you, mayor.
You're still welcome. Councilmember Tierney?
Uh, one thing I'd like to follow up with, uh, Mr. Saunders' comments, that even with the increase, we'll still be the second lowest, uh, city for business license fees, uh, only surpassed by Conway, which has none. So I mean, the increase on here is really nominal. And matter of fact, the question I asked, I was asked by most people is why weren't we raising this more? And this is one of the reasons why I wanted to keep it just to a doubling is because it's still an insignificant amount. I don't think another twenty-five dollars to open up a business in, um, Maumell is going to keep somebody from actually opening up a business in Maumell.
Just because we can do something doesn't mean we should do something. And I don't know that we have a problem here that we need to capture more of people's money.
One of the problems that we do have, though, are the scoff law businesses with twenty, twenty-five percent of the businesses just not paying their fees.
Well, maybe that's something that should be addressed.
Well, that's part of what I'm trying to do.
Rather than, rather than raising fees, you know, it's a perception that we're giving the business community, the perception that we're grabbing money here. So, and I don't think we need to do that. So, my opinion.
Councilmember...
Thank you again.
Councilmember Holt?
You know, the building that is between, um, Popeye's Chicken and the car wash is up on top of the hill and off the highway and circle around behind. Couldn't figure out what it was and I kept, went to Walmart the other day and looked down and it's a federal credit union. And it's the most awkward, out-of-the-place area that you can imagine for why in the world they wanted to put it there. And they could have come around the corner, like in relation to what, um, councilmember[1774.22] at least in relation to what, um, Councilmember Saunders said. I wish we could've invited them here. It would've made us look good. I don't know, you know, surely goodness, we could do it.
Councilmember Holt, we did a lot more than invite them here. We, we, uh, Community and Economic Development toured them, we assisted them, and then ultimately, they chose a location just outside the city.
Any, any idea why, what it was about us that they just didn't feel comfortable with, or didn't do?
My, my understanding is geographical reasons. They're allowed to put a business right where tons of vehicles can see it and quickly turn from the Boulevard on to their, onto that property.
Right. Well, no offense to the city, but, but they, they didn't choose us.
Correct, yes.
For whatever reason. And so, um, we think that we have something to be proud of, and we, you know, they had their own reasons. So, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further comments, we'll be on the third reading at the next city council meeting. We can move on to new business, um, which is Resolution twenty-twenty dash three regarding surplus property. Madam City Clerk, Treasury, could you please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Plasque County, Arkansas, Resolution Number twenty-twenty dash three, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
This is, y'all should've received a memo in the council packet. It's a Chevy, uh, Silverado, um, that is no longer in use, um, and needs extensive engine work. Just asking for your kind permission to dispose of that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution twenty-twenty dash three.
We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Resolution twenty-twenty dash three is approved. Uh, that concludes new business. We'll move on to, um, Mayor's comments. Um, the ideas for the state of the city to actually be posted in a hard copy form on the city website Thursday after the luncheon, uh, for anyone who wants to, uh, view it there. Couple things, we have the National League of Cities, um, coming up here soon. I wanted to draw y'all's attention to the RDOT public meeting at March ninth at five-thirty. Um, you should've seen that flyer. Um, it should be interesting. Um, for those that will not be going to DC, I'd encourage you to, uh, attend, learn, argue. Don't argue, agree, disagree, whatever you want. But let's, um, we're one of six communities or so in the state that they're holding a public hearing, and so I think we should take advantage of the opportunity to, um, inquire from, from RDOT about what's going on. Um, I guess that's, I feel like I've talked enough. So we'll move on to Councilmember comments. Councilmember Scott?
I just have a question. Uh, in the list of, of, uh, businesses that had applied for a license last year, I thought that we had that care facility down at the end of Country Club Boulevard. And it seemed to be that some dirt work was being done, and now it's just died, and it wasn't mentioned tonight. Did it go away?
No, it hasn't. It had, well, a lot of things weren't mentioned. I guess, uh, it wasn't included on Jim Neri's list of things that went through the planning commission.
But it is still on track?
Well, uh, it, it hit some road bumps with some wetlands. I, as I understand it, they're back on track. Um, but there's no, I don't know. They, they don't update me. I don't know if, uh, code enforcement has seen any building permits on that.
No, there's no, no building permits yet. Uh, it's my understanding that some, uh, financing has kinda been difficult for the, uh, developer or the owner that would be owning the building, actually.
Okay. So it's not dead, it's just delayed, do you think?
I don't, I don't think so, but you would have to talk to Mr. John T. Wright about that.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just curious.
Good question. I sit down, uh, and finish writing that, and I'm still in my head, like, did I miss any departments? Did I just forget to mention any whole departments of the city? Uh, any additional Councilmember comments? Madam City Attorney?
I did just want to, I'd call everyone's attention to the memo that I did on conflicts of interest that was in the packet. I, of course, won't read it aloud to you, since you are all quite capable of that. Um, but just the, the, um, the highlights, I guess, are just, you know, that I did wanna point out, you know, one quote that in particular, "A public office is a public trust, and the holder thereof may not use it directly or indirectly for personal profit or to further his own interests, since it's the policy of law to keep an official so far from temptation as to ensure his unselfish devotion to the public interest." And I think that is a good overall, um, principle to keep in mind when, you know, looking at conflicts of interest and when it's appropriate to recuse. However, in this particular instance, uh, there's another, um, Attorney General opinion and some case law on instances where a member is, um, just a member of a class. So let's say we were all considering, um, a tax on sodas. And I don't really drink much soda, but some of you drink three a day. So would we, would, uh, that person, just because they drink three sodas a day, wouldn't be required to recuse because they are a member of the class, um, and the public as a whole? So, and that particular decision did point out, a member is not disqualified where his interest is only as a member of a class. And it points out that, that is not a distinct interest from the public interest. So those types of determinations should be made on a case-by-case basis, but I do not feel that a holder of a, um, business permit would be required to recuse.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Uh, city clerk comments?
None.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. The motion is second. Is there any discussion on that mo- motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for your time.